I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 12:04 on Monday, July 26. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shank, present.
Chad Sexton Duranian, present.
Veronica Cal, present. Thank you. The meeting is being taped recorded. It's also being put on Channel 9 and it will be put on YouTube after the fact. Are there any additions or deletions?
I have a question, if that's okay.
Sure.
In our work session on July 16th, we had made an appointment for the conservation agent. In that motion, is that effective July 16th? Would, is that supposed, it doesn't mean that when they were to start?
No, that is not when the start date.
Okay, then I don't have any additions or deletions.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So it was contingent on a query check and a medical exam. So all of those things have to happen before the person can come on board.
Okay.
So that was just the date that we appointed her.
Okay.
Okay, but that is not her start date. We've done that frequently with all the appointments for personnel.
Okay.
Anything, Joe?
No, I'm good. No, I'll just add something in communications and nonsense in communications.
Okay, alright. Alright. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 9, 2021?
I make motion to approve the minutes for July 9, 2021.
Second.
Did I say 2021?
Yeah, July 9, 2021.
I have a question on that as well.
Okay.
I have made some changes in SharePoint to the document.
Okay.
There were grammatical. There was nothing substantive on that, so the motion would be for, do I need to amend it to include the amendments to it?
Yes.
Then so moved.
Joe, any changes you want to make?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes to the amendments.
Veronica Cal, yes. So we approved the minutes as amended, correct?
Yes.
With amendments, yes.
Alright. I have a question, though. This is a general minutes question, since I'm the one doing the minutes. Should I be, and I looked at, because Kathy had asked about the minutes from March to now, you know, that she needs to receive all of the minutes, et cetera, et cetera. So I looked at old minutes and the Zoom links are not in the minutes. They're taken out. I think I've been leaving them in. I'm not certain. And then down at the bottom, where it's, you know, minutes submitted by whomever, there's a link to the YouTube video. Should I be doing that in our minutes? That's not what I've been doing, I don't believe. I've been leaving in the Zoom link and I haven't at all linked to the YouTube video.
I've seen them with the Zoom link added at the end as opposed to the, in the very beginning, but the Zoom links have been in, I mean, I'm just going back to planning and stuff. We've always included that in the minutes.
But the Zoom links aren't valid anymore after the fact. Do you see what I'm saying?
No, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's to prove that we did, we posted it that way.
Okay, so, um, okay, so I guess if the agenda itself were part of the minutes, you wouldn't need that.
Correct.
Okay, I have to think about that. Should I be including the link to the YouTube video?
Well, you would.
Have not been.
Yeah, if you put the agenda as an attachment or as an exhibit or however we do that, that should be proof that it was a public hearing.
And so, do you want me to put the YouTube in, not the Zoom, the YouTube?
I would.
Alright, I'll do that going forward. Alright, I also sent you last night the executive session minutes from June 27. This is for an executive session that is being continued tomorrow night in our meeting. And I wanted to get those minutes out to you prior. I don't know if you've had time to look at it. If not, we can add it to the agenda for tomorrow night.
I did, but it says executive session minutes for June 29. You said 27.
Oh, I meant 29, yeah. That's an error on the agenda, isn't it? It's June 29, not the 27.
Yeah, on the agenda, it's the 29th minutes. That's what I picked up.
Minutes. So on today's agenda, there is an error. Those are the executive session minutes of June 29, not June 27. I think in the minutes, I have it correct, don't I?
You do.
Yeah, in the minutes, executive session minutes, yes.
Sorry, that's an error on today's agenda. It's the executive session of June 29.
So I move that we approve the executive session minutes for June 29, 2021.
Second.
Are there any amendments or changes to it?
No.
No, it's pretty simple.
These are not to be released, so can we change it not for release? We won't release until the end of the process. So approve the minutes and as written and that they will not be released until the end of the process for this.
So amended.
Amend to approve and not release. Alright, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Alright, moving on to 4.1. This is the CBBG. I wanted to talk about this just a little bit. In the SharePoint, I put the extension that I did sign and send back to Wayne Dara. This extends the grant expenditure, grant fundings through December 31 of 2021. And that document should be in SharePoint.
Yeah, I did see that.
Did I put it there?
Yeah, you did.
And, uh, we also have four assistance approvals to be signed. And there are two environmental releases that need to be signed. The ECO was previously Dave Hankels. And we have not assigned anybody to that task yet. So I would, I did have a conversation with Wayne Dara. I said that we would sign the approvals. And so what I'm looking for is you all to tell, to vote that I can sign it alone without you for the assistance approval. So they have four to go forward. And so I'm looking for that.
So that, those are the budget and program revision forms?
No. I'm going to the mail. There are four assistance agreements. So this is the mail in SharePoint. So this is from Wayne Dara. The current items that need signature include the following.
Right.
Four assistance agreements for housing rehabilitation between the town and the property owner. One is dated May 18, two are dated June 22, and one is dated July 13. When I spoke to him, I had asked him to please send me what needs to be done. They won't send it as such, so I am meeting Diane Hanson tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 PM here at Town Hall to sign off on those assistance agreements.
Okay.
If we need two assistance agreements, someone else would need to be here as well to sign. But because they're confidential, they didn't want to scan them to me. And I agree with that.
Yep.
So if you want, if you could vote for me to sign the assistance agreements alone, I can do that when I meet Diane. If one of you can be here at 2 o'clock tomorrow,
I can do that.
We can do two signatures on it if we want to keep that. But we had, I think we had discussed this with Town Council, and because it's the TA signature on it, when we do get an interim TA, it would be just a succession agreement. And we are the successors to the former TA for the time being, but soon it will be an interim TA.
Yeah, that's fine.
So either you need to vote or Joe be here at 2:00.
I can, I can be here tomorrow.
And Will, I'll leave the room and hand it off to you.
That's fine, if that's easiest, I'll be right there.
Or she can give it to me and we can, you know, both sign it too.
Yeah.
So maybe we want to keep it that way because that's what we've been doing for the most part.
Will that work for you, Chaz, or do you want to be here?
Oh no, I don't want to be here. I'm just thinking that just one signature is, is all that we would need because these are, there's a lot of information on there. And I feel comfortable with just having one, one signatory on these.
I'm good with that.
Alright, so then we have a motion for one signature.
So I move that we allow the Chair to sign the assistance agreements with COG.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Alright, so I will get that done. I want to finish with this mail here, though. Two Tier 2 environmental reviews, which are dated June 10. They've prepared the assistance agreements for signature. Diane will be there for me to sign. He suggested that the Board designate the environmental certifying officer, designate him as the environmental certifying officer, because he's been involved with the grant all along. He says the ECO designation is a purely administrative role and applies only to environmental reviews related to the grant program. So why then do we have two environmental reviews? So I need to get more information on that. But in any event, because it was Dave Hankels previously, and he was our conservation agent, and because further in the agenda, we're going to talk about the conservation position, we, well, I can just say it now, we do have a conservation agent who is expected to begin on August 16. So I would prefer that person be the environmental certifying officer.
May I make a suggestion? We have two documents that need to be signed and those are time sensitive. So my thought is that we would allow Mr. Darrow to sign those two documents. We need permission from the, the new environmental agent if they would want to take on the responsibility of that. But I would like to be able to get those two signed because those are on a time, a tight time schedule. The longer we hold that up, the longer the, the individuals are not getting their funding, so I want to get that taken care of.
Alright, so then can we vote to assign the permission to sign as ECO to Wayne Dara? Temporarily, until we get any, for now, I would say going forward for now.
Are you okay with that, Joe?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Alright, so is there a motion?
I move that we allow Wayne Dara to sign as environmental certifying officer until further notice.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Alright, so that takes care of those two things, and there's a third thing under, under this. On another matter, this is the second and last sentence. We are nearing the end of the waitlist for the housing rehab program. I have attached an application for the program and a one sheet that briefly describes the program. Please share copies with your other board members, and those are in SharePoint. In other client communities, we have had luck attracting new applications when board members take the time to distribute program information to constituents they believe would benefit from the program. I would rather do this as a more open process than us. It sounds like you would approach people individually, and I don't really want to do this. I think that we should have a, like, open meeting of some sort to bring this to people's attention. And we should do it sooner rather than later, so.
Is he, is he talking about the, the housing assistance portion of it, or is he talking about the fuel assistance? The housing assistance?
The housing assistance, but we could perhaps discuss fuel assistance, although I thought that ended in May.
It did, that's why I'm asking.
That was only extended to May, and as far as I know, the extension is only for housing assistance to the end of December. So what I would like to do then is have some sort of presentation perhaps next week. And I was going to talk to Diane Hanson about that as well tomorrow. Because they're the grant people, I am more comfortable with them presenting than us presenting.
Well, I also feel that this should have been in housing to begin with anyway, so I think the housing is the one that really needs to be doing this, as opposed to the selectmen, to be quite honest.
Okay, so how do you want to do this, then? Do you want to, we can shift it to housing if that makes sense to you. We should probably let Jody know that, too.
Um, I would be able to talk with Jody. Well, who's the liaison for Housing Authority? That's the one that should actually do that.
My liaison must be here.
I think it's you, Veronica.
I think it may. I am the liaison, yes. Okay. Alright.
You see how I did that?
You did that very well.
That was good.
Alright, so I will approach Jody and talk to her about it, and you know, I think there should be some sort of coordination between us, the Board of Selectmen, that we should announce. And then Housing could, at their meeting, and people could attend that.
Yep.
To bring it forward. And I'll talk to Diane then and see if she would be available to attend even by Zoom a housing meeting to talk more about this.
Yeah, we could, I'm sure that the Housing Authority would be able to schedule something rather quickly to have a public meeting on Zoom.
Okay. Because it will be a quick turnaround between applications, getting things rolling with the CBBG folks, and getting the work done by the end of December.
This is why it should have been in housing to begin with, but okay.
Alright, so we're going to shift, shift the public face of this grant to housing. Alright, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Alright, that is it for this. So unless somebody else has something else, moving down to 5.1, the work session, the Town Administration updates and reports, are there any Guardian IT updates?
In your packets, I had just put a synopsis of my last meeting with Guardian, and I guess, however you want to be able to discuss this, if we want to put it on a future agenda item or however is fine with me.
Is this the one that says meeting agenda, towns and informational technology, Chaz?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I did read that, okay.
So what are your thoughts on it? What do you want to?
Well, I mean, I think, Chaz, you're putting a lot of work into this, and I think we need to just continue implementing the different security things that you've been working on. If we keep kicking it down the road, we won't get it done. But nothing in there really came to my attention that we should really discuss in depth. I think you, working with Brad, I really feel that we need to keep going and get as much policies implemented as we can.
I think I would like to add another executive session just to discuss in detail and to kind of put a timeline on things. I'd also like to look at our finances. I know that we're pretty, even for FY '21, we're pretty far over the mark, and I believe there's somewhere in the 10,000 to 15,000 already charged in FY '22, perhaps. I want to kind of look at our budget and see where we are and kind of figure out how we're going forward.
Make sure we can afford.
Make sure we can afford.
Yeah, I would like that as well. Those are, those are the, our meeting was basically, these are the things that we see, and then I believe that we should meet in an executive session because some of these are security issues, that we'd be able to triage them into what we feel is most important, and then we can add it to the, you know, to a budget discussion. I think when we get to that point, I would like to bring in the Finance Committee as well with that.
I think that's a good idea. So I have a suggestion. There, it's going to make the meeting a long meeting, but on August 17, is that too late for you? I, we are having a joint meeting with FinCom and the Audit Committee to look at last year's audits, the management letter and the financial statement from the auditors last year. So would that be a good time?
I could do it then. I'd also like to be able, I'm sorry to cut you off. I'd also like to be able to have a conversation with department heads in the next meeting as well to talk about ways in which we can reduce help desk issues, all of that kind of stuff, too.
So this might be good timing, because I believe the next department head meeting is August 10.
That's what I thought, yeah.
At 11:00 AM, so add Guardian IT. So, and that will give me time to get questions to you, and we can determine which questions can be discussed in open session and which questions need to be discussed in executive session.
That's for the August 17.
Yeah.
And then we won't have a meeting on the 24th, is that correct?
We have a meeting on the 31st, not the 24th. So the 17th and the, so maybe the August 17th, add a Guardian IT except.
Okay.
And I'll also add a Guardian IT open. So we can discuss things that can be discussed in open session and open session, and things that are security related and except.
Correct.
And I will talk to FinCom. I haven't, we were supposed to discuss the financial statement on the 3rd, and I made this executive session after the weekend. The executive decision on agenda that I would like to move it to the 17th, partly in hopes that we have an interim TA in place, because I would like that person to be there for the audit report discussion, the Guardian IT discussion, and the energy aggregation and energy mask plan discussion.
I agree.
So have to let the Energy Committee, if anybody's watching, they will be blindsided that I've moved it from the 3rd to the 17th, so hopefully that can come. But the reason for that is, I don't think next week we will have an interim person starting. You know, maybe later in the week or the following week, we'll have to negotiate. So, but I think by the 17th, we will have someone in place, so. Add an exec session, alright.
Okay.
The next is, so anything else on Guardian IT? I'm going to move on to 5.1.2, finances, the CARES Act, COVID stuff, so let me get to that. I put a whole lot of things in the finance section, just in the last, you know, day or two, few hours as well. One is the municipal cherry, cherry sheet estimates. Those came out last week. And also Treasury Department updates regarding ARPA, particularly with us talking about the bridge underwater. We have to look at what's realistic for us to use as ARPA funds for. So if you could go through and read those, and we can discuss at a future date, that would be good.
Okay.
These are all things that I just put in on Saturday.
Okay, I was wondering what, I was concerned that we had to discuss it today, and I'm like, good lord, no, I'm just still going over.
No, 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 no. I mean, I just saw it. I'm not ready to discuss, but I, I wanted to put it here instead of in communications.
Good, because I have future communications with both the Senator Cronin and Sheila Harrington in regards to some of that, too, so.
Alright, so that was just there for information. It was something new that came out, guidelines. So, okay, so moving on to the FEMA monies that we are due as a town. I wanted us to be able to accept, I'm looking for the exact dollar amount on this contract. It was sent to Terry Walsh, and let me get to the letter, I think it's in. Hold on one minute, I'm looking for the exact page in this. We received the contract and we were awarded, I believe we asked for $63,000 in funds. I think I need to be a different. On a different page. Hang on a second. Well, if you look at Townsend, Town of Townsend FEMA materials, and you go through there, these are the final cost summary. And so what we requested of FEMA, and this is FY '20 funds, so these were from the period, in any event, these were FY '20 funds, the total that we requested were $63,659.13. We were awarded it, and so we have to accept it. And the, to accept it, you need to complete the, you have to complete the contract and return it. And I'm looking for the page that tells us it's the exact amount that we are reporting, And it is on one of these pages, and there are many pages.
$63,659.13 is what I have.
That was the ask. That was not the award. Here it is, okay. The award is on the contract itself, and the award is $58,811.18. So what I would like to do is a motion to accept it, and then either the name on the contract is Terry Walsh, we can add her to the signature list for her to sign, because this did get sent to her, because she communicated with them, or we can vote for one of us to sign, for me to sign, as the chairman, I guess. So I am good either way, but this needs to go back to them for the funds to come to the town.
Would it be easier just to keep it with Terry, where we're sent to her and let her continue? I think that would be the better way, right?
Yep.
I think so. So could we just, could we have a motion then for Terry to sign for the FEMA funds?
I'm going to put it all together, how about that?
Sounds good.
I move to accept the FEMA funds in the amount of $58,811.18 for the accountant Terry Walsh to sign for the Town of Townsend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Alright, so I have this printed already, and it has to be signed with a blue pen. And let me tell you how hard it is to find a blue pen. Who would know? So I'm going to hunt up a blue pen. Terry isn't in today.
Right there.
Oh, can I keep that?
Oh, now you're pushing your luck. Yes, you can. Oh, now you're pushing your luck. Yes, you can.
Thank you so much.
Don't, don't give it away.
I'm not, I'll give it back to you.
No, I'm good. Just asking you to receive.
That's right. All right, let me see if I have anything else in the SharePoint. We are still sussing out what has been and has not been um uh put in for. We did, uh, we have redirected the housing funds from, it was just in a general fund under COVID. We've redirected it to the specific COVID funds. And um I, I have promised Brendan Swain that I will send him an email with all my various questions. So we might need to get a consolidation report.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, Veronica, I thank you very much for all the work because it, it's, you're doing a lot of background stuff that people don't understand. That's a lot of stuff that we're going through to make sure that they're in the proper accounts, that things are accounted for properly so that we are, can work with the DOR and we can do, work with DLS to be able to, to uh be more efficient with what, what uh everything was. So I want to thank you personally for all the work that you're doing with this.
Thank you.
And I'll second that. I'll second that.
And then I will also say that I reached out for consultants. And I, just before this meeting started, got an email back from that Strategic.
Strategic consult, yes, yeah.
Strategic Solutions, and on a quick read, they would like to have a Zoom meeting. They do do what I asked.
Oh, wow.
Um, I had also reached out to Clifton Larson, and I haven't gone to Melanson Heath yet. But we did get back from them, and I would like to have a Zoom meeting. So what I need to do, you guys can think about this, um, because I did just get it. Do we want to all three meet, in which case it would be a public meeting? Or are you good with me reaching out to them and finding out what it is that they do, maybe with Terry on the line with me? And, and then see what we need to bring forward to a meeting.
I think that. I think Terry talking would be the, the first step and then set a meeting. I'll just put a bug in your ear that next Monday, I, I'm available all day. That's my Monday off, so.
So if we need a further, we could do it in a meeting soon.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
If, and I think procurement law, I'm gonna have to get three estimates unless they waived that for anything COVID related. So um it would just be really, really good to have a consultant looking at all this stuff.
Oh, yes.
They probably don't have to read all the DLS, DOR bulletins to figure out how this is being accounted for, et cetera.
Great idea.
So, all right, so I will, uh, Terry and I will talk to them and any other consulting firm that gets back to us.
Do we need a motion on that? Why don't you make one, Chaz, just so it's done right?
So I move that the chair investigate with the town accountant um to consult with the um request for services for the COVID fund consulting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. So I'll talk to Terry and see when she's available, and then however many we get in, maybe on Monday, our Monday meeting. I write this down. So this is Monday, August second, um, consulting booth for CARES Act. All right, so that's all I have there. Is Andrea on from FinCom? Is there anything that FinCom would like to report? I, you know, I see it differently.
We have nothing to really report. We're not meeting until um August twelfth.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Andrea. Um, all right, moving on to five point one point three, uh, the Conservation Administrative Assistant Search. I, I should have made this more general discussion regarding next steps in the hiring process. I am waiting for, I did contact the two references and I, I had a phone number, not an email for both of them. So I've left a message, but I haven't heard back yet. I'm hoping to hear back today from the references. We did interview an administrative assistant on Thursday, so I guess first we should discuss, um, what did you guys think in your interview with uh the applicant? Chaz, do you wanna go first?
I can go first, sure. Um, I believe that she holds the skills, uh, the skill set to be able to, to, to do the job. She's very eager. Um, I think the situation would benefit not only the town, but her as well professionally. She's uh very well organized, has a good idea of what, what we're looking for, uh, at least how she was talking to me in regards to it. So I'd like to move forward with this candidate.
Um, well, I'll reiterate a little bit that you said. I, I thought she was um well-versed in knowing what we're expecting of her. It's kind of a, a change in her job, but she's really looking forward to that at this point of her life. And my opinion, I think should be a great fit. She's gonna move locals, so that'd be even better. So I would like to see that we move forward with the hiring process. The sooner we can get the Conservation Commission have the right people in place, the better we'll be.
So um I, I agree with both of you. We had a really um good talk. And she does, she certainly has what she needs to, both her people skills that she's been honing in her other profession and her uh, you know, job skills, just the, being able to the, the clerical side of the administrative assistant. She seemed really uh good. So I would like to go forward with a motion to hire pending um the references, the reference check. So do we wanna do that today, or do we wanna do that tomorrow?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm ready to hear it.
Okay. I move to appoint, and I can say a name now, can I?
Correct.
Uh, I move to appoint Jennifer Levitt as Conservation Administrative Assistant, effective July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Contingent on a reference check, a core check, a medical exam with a one-year probationary period.
Second that motion.
Um, all those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, so I will get a, um, an offer letter out to her as soon as I hear back from the references. Assuming they're all positive, I'll send her the same package that um I sent to Je- Jessica. Uh, I want to confirm that uh our conservation agent, Jessica Consalvo, accepted the position on Friday um to begin on August sixteenth.
So I'd like to see if we can get them both starting at the same time. We can set them up IT-wise, and I'm sure that the onboarding process, we should be able to have enough time to get that set up as well.
Okay, so I'm going to talk with Misty this afternoon, um, put her in touch with Jessica and uh see that we get new hire packets out. We should also discuss a time when we can um introduce, after the sixteenth, introduce them to the Conservation Commission and go forward with that as well.
Okay.
And the, um, you know, I might uh invite them if they're starting on the sixteenth. Well, we should invite them to the staff. One of the comments that the staff made was that they never know who's starting in other departments when new people come on, but there hasn't been a process to introduce new staff to the existing staff. And I think that's um
Yeah.
A fair uh request. So it, it would be nice to have a way to do that. So let's think about that, see what we can do. All right. So uh moving on, the interim TA search, we are holding interviews on Thursday. I will get that posting for the meeting on Thursday uh out. That is an open uh meeting, and what I wanted to talk about today was the format of the interview, um, the process. We've set it up so that we have a candidate one, six thirty to seven, candidate two, seven to seven thirty, and candidate three, seven thirty to eight. And I set it up intentionally that way um for the people that participated in the workshop last week, Monday, so that they would be able to match the candidates from what they remember from the investments. So I guess the, the thing I wanna know is what is the format for the process um of the interview itself? I know I have questions about negotiating. You know, do we want to ask questions about time? How, you know, how many hours they
Plan on.
Plan on, you know, envision that the job here in Townsend is being as the interim. Those sorts of things. We haven't talked at all about uh wages. So all three that we're hiring are, are retired, so benefits aren't a piece of that exactly. But I just know from hiring the interim accountants that um you, Massachusetts is a state that does not pay into the social security system. Therefore, they have the mass over system, and even though you are retired, you are still required to pay into that system. So that is one piece. But anyway. Thoughts?
I, I mean, my thought is, uh, on Thursday, I wanna make sure we put the time in and hopefully by the end of that meeting, we can go back into whatever session we have to and, and maybe pick. I think it's really important that we as a community get a interim in here. And we just need to move forward with that. It's very important. Once again, I'll reiterate what Chaz says, Madam Chair, and, and thank you. You have spent unbelievable amount of time trying to carry the load for the board of selectmen, Chaz and I, we
Within the building.
Within the building, yes. And uh, you know, I mean, it's a job that we all took on as a board of selectmen to, to do certain parts, but you've gone above and beyond, and I think we need to really move forward and get an interim in here.
I, um, I had placed a document into SharePoint. Um, did you guys get a chance to look at it?
When you could place it, Chaz.
I put in a document um that has, um, well, my, my thoughts are this, as far as process is concerned. Um, I'd like to send a letter or an email to each one of them explaining what the process is, whatever we come up with, so that they are better prepared. Um, I thought that maybe we could come up with some kind of um, uh, the questions, do we wanna give them in advance, or do we wanna do it surprisingly to them, or give them a pool of questions? That these are potential questions that we may be asking you so that they can prepare themselves. Um, I just think that would be something that, that would be um kind of beneficial for us so that they can prepare for it. We need uh a timeframe, how we're going to conduct it, who's gonna ask what questions, that kind of stuff. I'd like to be able to be
Exactly.
Have everything all set in that request. Um, I, I, in the document that I put in SharePoint, um, it gives a um a narrative of exactly what we're doing, a little background, which would be something that the, I would assume the chair would say in the beginning. But I would like to put that same narrative in the email that we send out to them, so they're all aware of what is being said before they enter the room, so it's not like a big surprise to them. Uh, and then I think we should pick questions.
Okay, so um I, I agree with the format. I think we need a set of questions, and we ask all of them the same.
Same question. Chaz, just, sorry, where, where did you put that in SharePoint, Chaz?
I thought I put it in our meeting, today's meeting.
It's under, um, it's there.
Under Slack.
Yeah, I, I, I did not read this before, but this is exactly the document that I was hoping that we would create today in this meeting. So having this for a starting point is excellent.
And what's it under?
It's uh under section five of work session.
Work session.
And then um it's called ITA, interim TA candidate. So Chaz created a folder called ITA candidate, I believe, and it's in there. And I did just see this, Chaz, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Um, that, I figured that's my two cents worth, and you guys can add to it and do whatever you feel.
Oh, yeah. Well, I do see that. Yeah, all right. I mean, I, I just seen that. I apologize for that, but um, you know, I'll print it out when I get back to my office and, you know, I mean, I think, you know, we stick to the format that every single one gets the same question. You know, I mean, I have no issue with the chair if she wants to be the lead that kinda asking the questions. If we find something more particular we wanna ask, but I think we need to stick to a certain set of rules and you know, I, I'm ready to move forward.
So I'm looking at this, there are twelve questions. They each get thirty minutes. That means that it's like a two-minute answer for each of these. Is this too many questions?
That's what I, I, I'm just throwing those questions out based upon the categories that you had, that we were judging them in our workshop.
Um, I definitely have a procurement question because we have the Shared Streets and Spaces grant funds that the town has accepted. And we went out for procurement twice, once in March and once in um May, June, and we did not get any bidders. So we have to rebid that project and we have to do it soon. So I see that as one of the first things that we would, I mean, that's a concrete task that could be concentrated on. So I guess one of my questions was to ask them, I wanted to ask about how uh experienced they are with the bidding and procurement process for grants.
Yep, that should be number one. If that's that important, that should be the first.
That's important to me, and I think it's important to the town and to all the people that worked on that grant process.
It's a big grant. Is that the one a hundred and eighty? Eighty-two, I, I think it's very important. If we don't move forward, that's huge. And if we bring on an interim, you know, that's something that I think we need to make sure he has the capability and the will and the drive to move forward and get that taken care of for us.
Madam Chairman?
Uh, yes, Andrea.
Isn't there a, a course that um they have to take to become a certified procurement officer?
Um, there are courses that you take to be a procurement officer. Uh, you need to take the test to be quote-unquote certified. Um, you uh, every town can assign someone as their chief procurement officer. But the person does not necessarily have to be certified, meaning they might not have passed the test. They just have to have taken those procurements.
Certainly, certainly, but that might be something when you hire someone, if they don't have that, that for next year's budget, you consider putting in for them to get.
Yeah, thank you. I know that at least one of them is a certified procurement officer. This, the, I believe two of them are, but I'm not certain on the third. So I, I just wanna know their experience in that. So yeah, it is something that we could consider. Thank you, Andrea. So.
I think we should narrow the, the twelve questions down to maybe like eight really important. So maybe, I don't know how we do this, but Chaz, help us on this, you know?
Well, I would make it nine questions because there's three of us, so it's gotta be odd. So we can do two questions each. Um, and my, my thoughts is to hit upon the areas of our expertise. So I would like to do something in regards to housing, which would be question number eleven. I'd also would probably wanna do something like number four, describe how you would develop, manage, and increase relationships with other town stakeholders, particularly with elected and appointed board members such as finance committee or school boards, and how about with regional state groups and officials.
Okay, so I have a thought here, Chaz and Joe. Pick a third one. Let's keep it at 12. This is 12 questions. Let's keep it at 12, and we can tell them that they will be asked at least nine of these 12.
Well, the next one would be the five, because that's important to me. Can you describe the process you envisioned for working with the Townsend BOS to set goals and objectives?
Okay. So Joe, which three are you interested in?
Well, I thought number 10, tell us about any large municipal projects that you have managed in the past roles. I think number 10. I think number seven, please discuss how you have increased communication, both internally and externally, in the past positions, including any use of technology and social media. Please tell us a little bit about your interactions and engagements with citizens in the past roles, include some specifics. So I think seven and 10. Maybe four, please describe how you would develop, manage.
Chaz already grabbed one.
Oh, Chaz, you got that one?
Yeah, I did.
That was too many words for me, anyway. No, I'm kidding.
He has four, five, and 11.
I think number three, how would you describe your management style and ability to motivate the professional staff? How would you build relationships and trust with all town employees? Please describe your approach to goal setting for staff and yourself. So I'd do three, seven, and 10.
Okay.
Okay, so I would go with number one.
Chaz.
I figured that.
And I would go with number two, that's the budget one.
Yeah.
So number one, just so people that are watching, how do your qualifications and experiences match up with the challenges and opportunities Townsend's facing, based on your research of the town? Number two is, please describe your experience with creating budgets and managing finances, as well as your financial management strategies for ensuring organizational sustainability. Please also share an experience that illustrates your approach to capital budgeting. Townsend's goal is to maintain its credit rating while also keeping tax increases to a minimum. How would you try to do more with less? And then, of course, going down to the open space one, number nine.
I knew it.
Please tell us about your background in areas of open space and natural resource preservation, and include some specific projects you have been instrumental in guiding.
Nice.
Okay, so that means we have one, two, three, four, five. We skipped six. I'm going to renumber these, and I'm going to put the three that we didn't pick down at the bottom.
Okay.
Can you talk about what efforts you have made in your current or past roles in regard to regionalization and the sharing of surfaces? So number six goes down to the bottom. These will be, I'm going to put a line across it, and these are if time, you know, these will be talking about.
Six, eight, and 12, right? Six, eight, and 12.
Six, eight, and 12. So let me see what eight is. Please tell us about any technology you have implemented in your current or past roles, including specific examples. And 12 is, please talk about what, if any, economic development strategies you might try to encourage in Townsend. Do you want to just drop those three?
I, let's keep them in there.
Okay, I'll put them at the bottom, so I'm just reading them. I'm going to put these three at the bottom. I'll put a little line there with if time.
Yeah.
You know, and, but these are the nine that we want to talk about first in format.
Yep.
Okay. And so we'll go with that.
Good job, Chaz.
What I'll do is, I'll take this, I'll edit it, I'll ship it back out to you guys.
And then we'll print it.
We can look at it, it's tomorrow too late. I would like to give them, I would like to get this out to the candidates, just, you know, reminder of your interview on Thursday, here are the questions that we'll be asking you. We would also like you to think about your time, and, or maybe we do this, you know, I really want to know their time at the job, what are they thinking? Because we are, we advertise for part-time, and also what they are thinking for rate of pay.
Yep.
You know, that we would kind of want to know that as well. And I agree with Chaz, I would like to make an offer on Thursday.
Oh, I do, too. I think it's just enough, enough, move forward.
Be prepared with an offer letter, and thank you very much.
Yeah, and I really appreciated on Monday, when we had the staff involved and their input, that was really nice to hear their thoughts, and I thought it was a great workshop.
I agree.
So, all right, so anything else that we need to talk about here?
No.
All right.
We're moving on.
I will be publishing the agenda for Thursday, tomorrow. So let's know that. All right, moving on to 5.2, reports from Board Liaisons, are there any?
I have one that's sort of pressing. We have, one of the individuals that are at the recycling center has given their notice, and we need to, we have, to my knowledge, been actively seeking employment for that two positions that we have there, one of which has to have a hoisting license, or needs to set forward to get a hoisting license. So basically, I have asked, I've been informed, I was informed on Saturday, but I responded, and I didn't really get a conversation with the Board of Health. Board of Health had a meeting at nine o'clock today, which I was in lab, so I wasn't able to attend.
I did.
Okay, you did? Okay.
I'll talk about that in a minute.
Okay. Well, that's, that's basically, it's, this is what the situation is, and, you know, how are we going to move forward?
I did attend the meeting. Carla had sent me an email as well, because I do have under communication. There's a letter that they are asking for us to sign for, it's a grant for shared services from the Mass Department of Public Health. So Carla had sent that to me. So I put it under communications. I believe I scanned it in and never put it in here this morning. I got this slightly this morning. So in any event, so I, she had included a paragraph, very brief, about what you just talked about.
Okay.
So I had sent her, she, there was a question, the board had a question about job descriptions for the recycling attendance. So I will research, I don't know that the Collins Center, I don't know one way or the other, whether that was one of the positions that was included in their review of positions in the town. She told me that similar to the rec department, the recycling attendants are paid from the revolving fund, and so it's dependent on what they get in. So I have requested, and they pretty much agreed, that they look at their budget, what do they have for this coming year, what can they afford? The amount that they offered is less than anything on the Collins Wage Matrix, which is now the town's wage matrix. So they could look at that and see where. And one of the Board of Health members stated that there should be, you know, if you need a hoisting license, that's a, there should be like a tiered approach to this, because that's a more
More involved license.
It's a licensing
Yeah.
Thing, so it would warrant being paid more.
No different than if you, you know, hire someone at the highway bond, and they get a CDL license versus, you know, a hoisting license to run backhoes. So we do, it is just not a person that would be there that would just strictly be moving stuff. So we have to keep that in consideration. We got to make sure we're paying the right price for people like that, or we're never going to get them.
So I see Carla's answer, she's welcome to jump in if I misspeak, but they also discussed, is it possible to have volunteers at the, you know, to accept items like mattresses that are heavy and require two people to carry? You know, temporarily, could they do that? Because one of the things that was discussed is, you know, people need help carrying things from their car. So to have a single person there, for one, for carrying things is a problem, and perhaps from a safety standpoint as well. But they also thought about talking to highway or cemeteries and parks to see if there was any help there that could help them out on the weekends. And then, of course, the discussion was up, we're looking at overtime pay, so, and what does that cost? So they are going, the Board of Health is going to put something together, look at what they have, figure out what they can and cannot do, and then make an appointment with us at a later meeting, with a budget in front of them. Because how do you figure out what you can pay if you haven't really thought about what you expect to bring in? And the FY22 budget is already set, the revolving amount was already given for this year, so they would also have to stay within that budget. So in any event, it's a lot to think about, and
I mean, is the Board of Health actively, are they, what are they doing to fill those positions? Because I don't feel that this is strictly a Board of Selectmen's problem.
No, they've been, they've been active. They've been active, they've been, they've been putting it out there. I think it all has to do with, this is just a Saturday job that is so many hours, so it's not, you know, it's not anything that somebody, if somebody was looking for something to make money, this is not the job for it. It's just every other, every other Saturday, and it's, you know, less than minimum wage.
Right. So, so in any event, I did send Carla the Wage Matrix for general government, the A through F, and so they can use that in preparing. So they have a little bit to think about in how they're going to work it out, and the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority. They can't appoint on their own. But it would be good to have, they just need to look at it and figure out what they want to do, how they want to advertise, and what they can afford to pay for this.
And the hoisting license is important. It really is. If they need that, then that, you can't expect, and this is only my opinion, to get a candidate in, even though it's part-time, that will have a hoisting license from the minimum wage. That just, you know, that just won't work, I don't think. So, you know, all locked in the world to them, let's hopefully we can find the right person.
So I said, when they have everything together, then make an appointment with us, we'll put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
And we'll discuss and go forward.
Yeah, we'll be happy to help them do whatever we got to do.
And there we have it.
There we go.
So another thing that was talked about in the meeting, that wasn't this at all, but that we might want to just have on our radar is the COVID-19 variants and going back to masking and that sort of thing. And how do we encourage vaccinations? And so they're going to be looking at that as well. So we stay as we are for now.
Yeah.
Things to just know that everything changes, as everything changes, so.
Yeah.
All right. I think that's it, correct?
So as far as liaison is concerned, I have, this is a busy week for me, and for us, actually, because we get a lot of meetings, too. But I'll be touching with, touching points with the Town Council and the Water Department tomorrow in our, in the Town Council's scheduled meetings. I'll be at the Planning Board meeting tonight. And what else is on my schedule?
I will tell you that, and these are my liaison things, I do have two, if you're done, Chaz.
Yeah, I am. Yep.
Okay, capital planning, I would like to, I'm the capital planning liaison, and the only person right now on the Capital Planning Committee is Chris Nocella as an at-large person. There are four at-large members of that, one FinCom, one Selectmen, and one Planning Board representative. I would like to have that committee seated by the end of August, so that they can start looking at capital in September. It's a little earlier than what it's been done the past few years, but I think it's, I think it would be good for the committee to look and see where our capital plan is, and where we are funding-wise, what we need, all as part of the budgeting process. So I did send to Kathy and John Barrett, and to the Planning Board and FinCom, and I am with this sending to us. We need to come up with a candidate, and I'll be putting that on an agenda coming forward. The other thing is, Montusid Joint Transportation Council, I was attending that as a Planning Board rep until I became Board of Selectmen. And I know I was voted as it, but apparently they never got the assignment, because they still have Don Klein as the person at MJTC, and I've been attending. So I am the MRPC rep, I am the MJTC liaison, but I can also be the rep for that, if you want. Planning Board has their assigned rep. But I emailed Brad Harris this morning just to find out if we can just tell him in an email, or if we need it, that they usually have appointment forms that they like you to fill out. And so I'll get that, and that will be upcoming in a future meeting as well. So, that's all I have.
That's under reports, liaisons.
That's under liaison reports.
I just got a little bit of an update. On August 3rd, I'll be meeting with the Fire Union and Council to try to go over contract negotiations again. Also, on August 3rd, I will be involved in a joint meeting with Council, the Fire Chief and Police Chief in regards to communications and Communication Center. Things are moving forward that way. Hopefully, we'll get a better idea how we're going to move forward on that.
Okay. All right, thanks, Joe. Anything else?
Not in liaisons, no.
Okay. Announcements and communications. I know I put a few things in there.
I just have one, Madam Chair.
Sure.
We need to be able to follow the chain of command that has been established, so if any issue comes up with any board or committee, it needs to go to the liaison and not to other members of the Board of Selectmen, because it really is not a good use of our time if two Selectmen are working on the same issue. We can't talk to each other, so we don't know if the other one is doing any work on it. And some of it involves Town Council, and if we are talking with Town Council, I don't want to have two Selectmen going up and asking Town Council the same question, it's just a poor use of our resources. So as far as the chain of command, whoever the Selectmen liaison is, that's the individual you should be communicating with.
I agree 100%. Unfortunately, I see myself kind of drug in the middle a little bit, because I'm right in my office, but, but I try to tell everybody that comes in that, you know, you've got to deal with, you know, whoever that person would be, but if it's a department head, you know, that I'm speaking with, I kind of say, well, you know, I just express my opinion that just take action, do whatever they got to do. And like you said, Chaz, I don't think, where we don't speak, and we don't know what someone's saying to you or me, I'm a good listener, so people come to my office a lot, and they vent, and I'll listen, but hopefully that, we can get that under control and make sure everyone knows that any department head or anybody that's involved, go directly to their liaison. And not saying they can't reach out to Veronica or you, if it was someone under me, but I don't think we should be making any kind of decisions, what has to be done.
Yep, I agree.
I thought I had put things under communications and announcements for today's, but I didn't. I put it under tomorrow. So we will go, the Board of Health attestation letter will be discussed tomorrow, and that will give me time to put it in the communications, or actually, I think I have it there. I don't have the letter itself, I have the request. So I'll put the letter itself, and I did scan it this morning.
I did. I just.
Signed it at the meeting.
I just have maybe communications here. I think all, all of us got an email that was sent to the Selectmen in regards to a dog complaint on Blood Road. And it kind of got a little blown out of proportion or heated. Mr. Dalton that initiated, sent us out a email on Saturday, kind of very disappointed of lack of, of the way we handle things. And so as the liaison, public safety, I reached out to the police department just to ask him what was going on. I reached out to the dog officer before I reached back out to Mr. Dalton because he insisted that he would like a phone call from one of us. And it seems like it's a, pretty much so an ongoing problem for the past four or five years there. The way it was finally left is that, you know, enough's enough. If any more complaints come, there are going to be fines issued and then they can deal with it that way. But I just want to make it very well-known that the Board of Selectmen do not sit on our hands. If we get any kind of complaint like that, we forward it to the proper people and everyone's doing the best we can.
I guess I will add to that. We did have two unregistered vehicles complaints come in as well. Those will be forwarded to the police.
Okay.
To investigate. And they're both in, like, Timberly Park.
Yeah.
And I had something else to say about that. As far as the dog goes, the dog bylaw goes, I think that not today or tomorrow, even next week, but I do think a review of that bylaw might be in order to look at that, that there have been changes to statutes in the state of Massachusetts and we might want to take that into consideration. So.
Awesome. Right.
Anything else under announcements and communications? Everything else I will bring up tomorrow. All right, next, we're at next meetings, correct?
Yeah.
All right, we have a meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM. That has been posted. I have to look and see if I have any revisions, but right now I can't think of any off the top of my head. We are adding a meeting, which I will post this afternoon for Wednesday at 5:30. This is executive session only and it is in-person only, no Zoom link. And then we will also have an open meeting on Thursday, the 29th. I'm posting that for 6:15 with our interviews beginning at 6:30.
Yep.
So those are the upcoming.
All good.
Looks like we're going to have a Monday, perhaps, right?
Yeah.
I think CDBG. Okay, somewhere I wrote down Monday. Anyway, all right.
I move that we adjourn the meeting at 1:17.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joshank, yes.
Text and Duranian, yes.
All right, the Kelly, yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chaz. Have a good day.
You too.
All right, goodbye.